Welcome to I A C E. So today we discuss target S S C, C G L and C H S L pure maths session seven, okay? Question number one, first question. See, in the given figure, in the given figure is parallelogram A B C D. So A B C D is a parallelogram, A B C D is a parallelogram. A B is to B is two is to three, so this is in the ratio of two is to three, right? Then what is the ratio of F B by D A, F B by D A, right? If you observe here, this is a triangle, you have a triangle in a. In this triangle, F B is parallel to D A or not? In a triangle, parallel is there, huh? In a triangle, parallel means what is the theorem we have to remember? Basic proportionality theorem we have to remember, oh no? What a triangle or parallel line can be put, basic proportional theorem we have to remember, huh? So in the basic proportional theorem, what is point number two, second point? So top length by total length, that is E A by, sorry, E A, E B, correct? E B by top length, E B by total length, E A. E is equal to, uh, this side, E F by, E F by E D equal to total length. E D equal to parallel lines ratio, that is B F by E B. So this is a basic proportionality theorem or Thales theorem, either or. Point number two, second point, basic proportionality theorem, point number two. So what we have to find, F B is to D A, F B is to D A, find out. F B is, oh, not A B, right, huh? F B is to D A, right? So we have to find F B is to D A, F B is to D A. So the parallel lines ratio, already we know what is E B? E B and then the three by E A and then the five. So F B is to D A is in the ratio of three is to five, so option B is the right answer. So, basic proportionality theorem, you put in a triangle or parallel. In a triangle, parallel you are observing, immediately you have to remember the theorem, that is a basic proportionality theorem. Basic proportional theorem can be put, okay now, right? The next one. In a circle, P Q and R S are two chords which cut each other at O externally. Array, two chords intersect each other externally means those we call it as C K S and. What name and um, C K S and they, two C K S intersect each other, and again we will get cases. So what are the two chords, P Q and R S? P Q and R S, P Q and R S are two chords intersect at O outside. Outside intersecting, outside intersect, how do I go on, two C K S intersect each other, what is the condition? I intersecting point in the chapel, O Q into P equal to, uh, condition is. O Q into O P equal to, uh, this side, O S into O S into O R. Okay, O Q into O P equal to O S into R, value say we chat, correct? P Q is to R S is in the ratio of, it is two X, it is the X, it is in the ratio of two is to one. O S is given how much, six, and O Q is also given four. Then what is the value of O P, O P value and the, and the X value find out just say, man, tell us. What is O Q, O Q and then the four into O P, what is O P, O P and the four plus two X? Equal to, what is O S, O S and the six into O R, what is O R? Six plus X, how now, right, two, three. And then I can say, two, 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 three, and the eight plus four X, eight plus four X equal to. Eight plus four X equal to eighteen plus three X, and the X equal to, what's the? Ten, X equal to how much, ten, X is ten, what's the, man, can you go, Ali? O P find out, what we have to find, O P, what is O P? O P and then the, O P is four plus two X, that is four plus twenty, means how much? Twenty-four, so what is the length of O P, O P length is how much? Twenty-four, so option A is the right answer, okay? Then question number three. Find the value of one minus sine two A by, sine ninety minus two A, what is sine ninety minus cos, enough? So cos two A. So one minus sine two A by cos two A, that value is equal to one minus one tan five by four plus A. Cot five by four plus A, how now? So I know, yeah, but if the all trigonometric expression or not? Trigonometric expression, you assume just coach, that two A, I know, yeah, fifteen, and you assume. Sir, fifteen and I need to get you just gonna, and it could forty-five, you know, that. Forty-five, man, I tell you, value, call it, and fifty, I think, correct, plus fifty, no, minus fifty, now, just, I mean, man, I tell you, value, so. That's why I am taking A as fifteen, and fifteen, two, totally, just, I mean, I tell you, values, so. Easily we can find, so I am taking A as how much, fifteen degrees, yeah, I know, fifteen. Uh, yeah, what's the, one minus sine thirty by cos thirty. What is sine thirty, one by two, and cos thirty is root three by two, and the? One by two by root three by two means one by root three, so it is exactly equal to one by root three. Where it is one by root three, one by root three is equal to cot sixty, enough, that? So cot sixty is one by root three or not? So this is sixty degrees, how now, I can't, because sixty degrees, so option D is the right answer. Forty-five plus fifteen is how much, sixty degrees, how now? So cot sixty, so option D is the right answer. Simple, come on, I mean, you assume, yes, A equal to fifteen degrees, okay? So you put in a, sorry, anything it is given, means simply assume the angles, angles, you assume, okay now? Question number four, sine two A into secant four A is one, sine two A into. Secant four A equal to how much, one, and theta lies between zero and five eight, five eight means twenty-two and half degrees. Zero, twenty-two and half, my, what is the value, we have, that is fifteen degrees. But fifteen degrees, I think, so what is, this is sine thirty, and this is secant sixty-one, out, only, only. Sine thirty is one by two, and secant sixty is two, exactly, so it is one, tell it or not? So what is A, is how much, fifteen degrees, I think, we can find, what we have to find? Cos three A we have to find, so cos three A means cos forty-five, what is cos forty-five? One by root two, so option D is the right answer, okay? Right, then, next one. So two power, X square minus Y square is thirty-two, and the thirty-two, how we can write? Two power five and right two, and two forty-three, how we can write? So three power five, and three, nine, twenty-seven, eighty-one, two forty-three power five. Then what is the value of four of X square plus Y square? And the, you can, what we are, understand, X square minus Y square equal to how much? Five, as well as X plus Y equal to how much, all five. But you, you know, right, you, X plus Y into, X minus Y equal to five, and the. So what is, this is X plus Y five, I think, what is X minus Y? One, and, but X plus five, X plus Y with five, X minus Y equal to one, I think, one, I think. What is X, X and the, three, and Y equal to and the, two, how now? X equal to three and Y equal to, but X three, Y equal to two, and the, simple, four power X square, what is X square? Three square, and the nine plus Y square, and the two square, and the four, and the four power thirteen. So four power thirteen is the right answer, four power thirteen, and the two power twenty-six, and the, you know, I saw, two power twenty-six. So two power twenty-six is the right answer, so option B is the right answer, okay? Then, tan A equal to one, tan B equal to root three, tan A equal to one, where it is one forty-five degrees, how now? So tan forty-five is one, so A equal to how much, forty-five degrees? And root three, where it is root three, tan sixty is root three, and the B equal to how much? Sixty degrees, I think, what we have to find, cos A, cos B, minus sine A, sine B. Cos A, cos B, minus sine A, sine B, find out, Charlie, I got, cos A, cos B. Minus sine A, sine B, only thing, substitution, substitution, I got, what is cos A? Cos, and the, cos forty-five, cos forty-five is one by root two into B. Cos sixty, cos sixty is one by two, minus sine forty-five is one by root two into sine sixty. Sin sixty is root three by two, and the, actually, one minus root three by two root two. So answer is one minus root three by two root two, so that is the right answer, simple, values, it, option, substitute, okay now? So simply we have to substitute the options, okay, right? Then, question number seven. If theta is a positive acute angle, tan theta plus cot theta equal to two. Tan theta plus cot theta equal to two, and the, what, what is that? Theta equal to how much, one and the theta equal to how much, forty-five degrees. Tan forty-five, one, cot forty-five, one, so theta equal to forty-five, and what is the value of secant forty? Very simple question, what is secant forty-five, or root two, so option D is the right answer, how now? So tan theta plus cot theta, two and the theta value, you put in, forty-five, you know, right? The next one. If P Q are the midpoints of A B, B C and C A respectively of triangle A B C. So in triangle A, A B C, A B C triangle, in triangle A B C, P Q are the midpoints. P is the midpoint of A B, A, P, Q, R are the midpoints. Midpoints, I think, man, so geometry, so if you join the midpoints, if you join the midpoints, then what happens by midpoint theorem? So what happens, the total triangle will divide into four equal parts, and you, in parts, can divide, you know, four equal parts, can divide, you know. Now, P Q are, and the, eight, and the, eight, and the, remaining, what, and the, eight, the, it, what, you, what, I find out, Charlie. What we have to find, we have to find area of A B C, total area, what is area of total area? Thirty-two, so option B is the right answer. So whenever if you join the midpoints, the triangle will divide into total, how many parts? Four equal parts, four equal parts divided, out of four equal parts, one part is given, easy eight. What a part, eight, I think, four parts, you know, thirty-two, okay, right? Then, next one, X plus Y equal to five, X square plus Y square equal to twenty-five. Which one of the following value is X cube, X cube plus Y cube? X cube plus Y cube, you know, only, I know, five, or, or, zero, I know, I know, only, simple, five plus zero, and the, five. Alaga, five square plus zero square, and the, five square plus zero square, and the twenty-five, sorry, I think, exactly. Okay, mally formulas, we, I'm, I'm, simple, I am assuming, so what is X, five, what is Y? Zero, and what is X cube plus Y cube, the five cube plus zero cube, that is how much? One twenty-five, simple, so option C is the right answer, how now? X plus Y, five, X square plus Y square, twenty-five, square, can, five, other, you can, squares, clear, can, if you take one value is zero. What a value, zero, this, can, automatically, tally, you know, so X is five and Y is zero, means what is X cube plus Y cube? One twenty-five is the right answer, and they, X cube plus Y cube, formula, let's, only, expand, just, problem, okay? Right? Right, so A B is the diameter, geometry question. Diometer, and again, a word, can be put, immediately, what is the theorem we have to remember? So angle on a semi-circle is ninety degrees, what is the angle, angle on a semi-circle is ninety degrees. Already, what, you said, angle on a semi-circle ninety, what, it was, I didn't, in question, ninety, and what, you said, but no need to tell, in the, diameter, it is ninety degrees. C A C is a chord, so find angle, B A C is thirty degrees, the tangent at C intersect A B produced, then find, huh? Then, yeah, what, you know, A B is the diameter, yes, is a chord, such that angle B A C sixty, it is ninety, I think. Tangent, I got, draw, said, B C A B, produce, that, story, you know, I, 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 B C, it is E B C. In quote, and the, B, E, rented, something, you know, less than, greater than, equal to, as, we cannot say, and, how now? So this is ninety and this is thirty, means this is how much, sixty degrees, how now? Right, it is sixty degrees, and the angle and the one twenty degrees, right, one twenty, angle on straight line is how much? Man, key, alternate segment theorem, what alternate segment theorem is telling? The angle made by the tangent, tangent, made, form, tangent and chord, form a angle. Other chord, alternate, form a angle, and, you know, equal, and the, thirty, and the, you know, thirty degrees, and the. So what is angle C A B equal to, angle C A B, C A B angle, alaga. Uh, B C D angle, and, you know, equal, you know, in the, which theorem? By alternate segment theorem, you put, alternate segment theorem, when we have to remember alternate segment theorem? So alternate segment theorem, a tangent and a chord, what a tangent, what a chord, can be put, see, one tangent, a chord. See, one tangent and card, tangent ki card ki form A A angle, a card compulsor ke point of contact niche passav. That angle, its side angle form aita, attupak chodala, attupak angle form aita, itupak chodala, chonde. So mari, iti tangent, iti card, E angle, iti smaller arc made form A A kavati. Manam bigger arc match, some bigger arc, may dekka form A A, adantuntundi, thirty, so adhi thirty, idukura thirty undundi. But iti one twenty, thirty means this angle is also how much? Thirty degrees, idukura enta, thirty ante, what is B C D? Therefore, B C D is a which triangle, is an isosceles triangle. But in isosceles triangle, the corresponding angles, corresponding sides are equal, so my corresponding sides equal ga undai kavati, B C equal to emotundi. B D outundi, so option C is the right answer. And they, E question, question lo mano, he observe jesa, what is the theorem we observe? Alternate segment theorem we observe, and moreover, actual diameter means angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees. Adhikuda undi, kani manaki, uh, kastapattakunda vaade question lo ichesan ninety ane, but no need to give ninety, adhikuda manaka tellisu. Diameter means angle on a semicircle is always ninety, okay now, right? Next one, question number eleven, see, in the given figure, S R Q P is a trapezium, trapezium, S R is how much? S R is how much, four, give it chadu, Q P is how much, Q P, ekada the Q P, ah, Q P is how much? Six, O R is how much? Five and R P, then find R P, right? Manak trapezium nechkunapu, quadrants, so trapezium lo points nechkunamanti. So in a trapezium, if the sides are in the ratio of, parallel sides are in the ratio of four is to six, ante. If the parallel sides are in the ratio of A is to B, if the parallel sides are in the ratio of A is to B, the diagonals also divides in the ratio of. A is to B, avukoda enta ratio le divadavutundi, A is to B, and iti four is to six, and enta ratio undi, two is to three, ante. Parallel sides are in the ratio of two is to three means automatically, automatically what happens, the diagonals also divides in the ratio of. Two is to three laune, divide outunda, dalaras kuran chepana, three, three raayandi, two, two, ikada ras kurdne chaptam, how now, this is the length even. Okay, right, iti manam chepkunedi, how now? So sides are two is to three ratio undai, diagonals kuda enta ratio undai, two is to three ratio undai, manaka already tellisu. Pune, ekada ras tambele value, iti five icha, five, iti manaki china value. And they manaki two parts tellisenta, two parts enta, five, manaki entelsu, two parts is five means one part is how much? Two point five, aitha manaki any parts kavali, R P, what is R P, R P means how many parts? Five parts kavali, R P equal to, how many parts, five parts, so five parts is how much? Two point five into five, that is how much? Twelve point five, so option B is the right answer, so only thing you have to know that. Properties of trapezium, mano seven or eight properties manam matladukundan trapezium lo, so daantlo one of the property ante. If the parallel sides are in the ratio of A is to B, the diagonals also divides in the ratio of A is to B, diagonals kuda enta ratio le divadavutai? A is to B laune, divide outai, and chaptam, alage, top triangle, bottom triangle, both are similar triangles, and chaptam. Side by side triangles, both are of equal area, and chaptam, see, any conditions akara matladukundam, midpoints kunchi matladukundam. So different, different concepts we will discuss in a trapezium, how now, so daantlo one of the point. And then, next one, twelve, three power X plus three power X plus one equal to thirty-six, what is X power X? Right, so simple chonde, so X equal to two aite, he me nishonde, X equal to two, and three square enta? Nine plus twenty, three square enta, nine, nine plus twenty-seven, nine plus twenty-seven enta? Thirty-six, exactly tallidanan, and then what is X, X equal to how much? X is two, X equal to two means X power, X is how much, four, so option D is the right answer. Very simple, laser solve jasananda, solve chedeme, three power X common T C, very simple question, chalach chinede. Three power X common T C, uh, so he must nde, one plus three equal to how much? Thirty-six, and four ones, four nines, and X equal demosnde, two, but enta kodavosun, just by observing the. Equation, easily we can identify the X value, X value is hardly easy guy, identify chey, how now? So what is the value of X, X equal to how much? Okay, right, then, question number thirty, see, find the value of K. For which sixty-four X square plus K X plus one equal to zero has equal roots, if you go to manam polynomials nechkunamanti. So nature of roots nechkunam, what are the nature of roots we discussed? B square minus four A C equal to zero, yepudu, roots are equal, yepreena roots equal ga undai? Equal ga undian ante, yepudu, what is the condition? Yepreena B square minus four A C equal to zero aite, yepudu roots are equal, alage, B square minus four A C. Greater than zero aite, roots are real and distant and nechkunam. Okay, and if B square minus four A C less than zero aite. Roots are imaginary and nechkunam, in conditions nechkunam, diin sambaninchim matladukundam kodha. Polynomials roddin, kunchi in detail ga enga discuss jastam, so daan kunchi chaptunada, roots are equal anadu. But roots are equal ante, B square minus four A C equal to how much? Zero, what is B, this is B A C ante, so A is sixty-four, B is X K. K and C equal to one, only thing we have to substitute, what is B? And take K square minus four into sixty-four into one equal to zero. Take K square equal to four into sixty-four means K equal to two into eight, that is how much? Sixteen, so what is the value of K, K is how much? Plus R minus sixteen is the right answer, square undu kada, so plus R minus sixteen is the right answer. Okay, so yepreena sare, so roots are equal, and iti, iti ekada tote kada, thiin polynomials, equations logoda, nature of roots. Are very, very important, diin base cheskun, problems kodha cheyochene, ante, options nochay, direct ga eliminate lo kodha cheyochu. Nature of roots use cheskun, and kodha chaptam manam akar, okay now, right, then. Next, cot X equal to three by four, what is the value of, uh, sine, one minus sine X by one plus sine X, very simple. Cot X, what is a cot, cot ante? Edges and by hypotenuse, so three, four, five is the condition, so what is one minus sine X, one minus sine? So from the right angle triangle, what is sine X opposite by hypotenuse, opposite is four by five. And they, one minus four by five by one plus four, yepreena sare, so vaka trigonometric ratio is given. Trigonometric ratio equal to, and tellis ta, kachitanga, problem pythagoras theorem use ches, yali, adhi good fit kundi. Okay now, so that is one by five plus one by, sorry, nine by five, that is one by nine. So option B is the right answer, okay, right, and then next one. X equal to seven minus four root three, then find the value of, X equal to seven minus four root three. Then find the value of root X plus one by root X. So, see, akka square roots ela find out cheyalan, kodha manakonechkunam classroom lo. So how to find square root direct ga, ante mind calculation lo square root find out chey, and nechkunam. So what is the first step we discussed in a square root? So, lopala karaboduthana, root mundu yepudu two nee undali anukunak, kani ekka eumundi, four undi. Four undu kavati, diin neen jasna ante, kavalsda, extra two nee, inside badi, vaka two lo abad badi velan, inside aite, evutundi, four utundi, ante, four into. Ela ras kundan chaptam, so first two ochetada, set cheskunannam, after doing that. Ikada product annava, product anedhi, ikada sum kikala vali, product anedhi, sum kikala, exact galagam chonde. Four into three, twelve, and four plus three, seven, so E product, ikada sum kikala undaleda? Alai equal ga undai, simple ga manam nechkutam, daan ikka roots raayandante, root four minus ande, minus plus ande, plus. Root three and chaptam, ante, two minus root three, so what is the square root of four minus seven minus four root three? Seven minus four root three, vaka square root ante, two minus root three, iti mind calculation ela chodugane. Ela question chodugane, a twelve bundu kada, root four plus root three, root four minus root three, and two minus root three, and direct ga chaptam manam. So mind calculation lo, roots ela find out cheyalan, manam nechkunam, right? So what is the square root of seven, seven minus four root three, two minus, inka on the substitute chedeme. Two minus root three plus one by two minus root three, right? So receive rokal, so squares difference emundi, ante, two minus root three plus. So minus becomes plus outundi, paikeltan outundi, plus by squares difference anta, one, four minus three, one. So difference one undai, plus cost emotundi, minus, minus, plus outundi, nechkunam, evutundi, root three, root three cancels, answer is how much? Four, so option B is the right answer, okay? Right, so square roots, square roots are very, very important, jartha ga nechkaval, okay now, and very simple, right, chonde. A monument of fifty cylindrical pillars, each of diameter fifty centimeter and height four centimeter. What will be the labor charges for getting these pillars cleaned at fifty pies per square meter? Fifty pies a square meter aite, he chayali, ante, manam he find out cheyali? We have to find the lateral surface area of the, ante, cleaning jasna ante, lateral, mostom, elas. Cylinder scheme jasna du, vaka, karaboduthane, ante, monument ante, manam ekadake na, velta ekadain, sambal undai, how now? So, uh, so ground is sambal karaboduthundi, a sambal ni cleaning chey, ala, vaka sambal, ala ante sambal enunai? Fifty unai, how now, a sambal cleaning ante, ante lateral surface area clean chesnat, ala ante, veni fifty clean chey. A lateral surface area ante, manam, cheyalsin, anta total cost, total cost emotundi. What is the total cost, any pillars unai, fifty pillars unai, fifty pillars ni, diin ni clean chesnaru. Lateral surface area ni clear chesnar, ante, two by R H ni clear chesnar into, yenta cost charge chesnar du? Fifty pies, fifty pies ante, one by two rupee charge chesnar, iti manam cheyalsin. How now, ante, manatotal cost leemundi, pi undi, manak total cost leemundi, pi undi. Mari, pi unante, what we have to do, simply divide with eleven, eleven todi, eh, divide outundi, chonde. Idhautunda, iti, oh, ante approximate value chedu. So approximate value is given, so okay, fifty into two, two cancel. Twenty-two by seven into R, what is the radius? Radius is given, diameter is fifty, diameter is fifty, diameter fifty ante. Radius enta, twenty-five centimeter, twenty-five centimeter ante, one by four meter, how now? One by four meter ante, one by four into height, height enta? The four, four cancel, and that, duchindi karam, so nearly, ante, fifty into three point one four. Ante, fifty into three point one four ante, one fifty kada, one fifty ante, around, one fifty seven, ante kada. So fifty-three is one fifty, and points on ante, one fifty is the kila undai, one fifty is the kila, and answer ante, one fifty seven. So option B is the right answer, approximate value chadu, not the exact value, exact value chundai, eleven to divide aye, the gani, ekada ichindi. Approximate value, three point one four is the approximate value of twenty-two by seven, how now, right? In an isosceles triangle A, B, C, angle B is five fifty-five degrees, A D is the median. In triangle A, B, C, A D is the median. Isosceles triangle, yepreena, in an isosceles triangle, equal sides nechchadra chese, median and it is not only median, it is. Altitude, median maatramai kada, altitude, not only altitude, it is angular bisector, any outai, nechkunam. A isosceles triangle, so equal angle, equal sides nechchadra chese, angle nechgaani, yepreena, me remaining nechkaadu. Equal sides ka, come, ante, common angle nechgaani draw chesse, that is not only median, adhi median maatramai kada. It is altitude as well as angular bisector, rendu utai, aite, oridhanadu, angle B equal to how much? Thirty fifty-five degrees, iti fifty-five degrees, aite, idukura enta? Fifty-five, fifty fifty-five means, one ten means, idhanta total enta? Seventy degrees, varikeng kavali, angle D A C, D A C, are, is seventy-five, one ten, enta, thirty-five, thirty-five, so what is the angle? Thirty-five is option A is the right answer, very simple question. So in a isosceles triangle, the angle, the angle we are drawing from a common side, equal sides. Equal sides, vaka common angle nechgaani, yepreena, vaka line draw chesse, that is median altitude as well as angular bisector, any outai. Okay, so that is seventy, seventy means it is divided into two parts, that is how much, thirty-five, thirty-five, okay? If X plus Y equal to two Z, what is the value of X by, uh, X minus Z plus Y by Y minus Z, very simple. Idhauti, manakachin, it's a algebraic equation, the algebraic equation, algebraic equation, manakachin, value this kundi, here, value this kundi. One, uh, after, hmm, this one, 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 one anukundi, mali problem outundi, indukante. Kenda zero usundi, vaka two anukundi, iti one, uh, two, one, and three aindha? Uh, left a, two, four anukundi, two, four anukundi. So X Y, X two, Y equal to four ante, Z equal to, is equal to how much? Six avala, ante, Z equal to enta? Three, and X equal to two, Y equal to four, and Z equal to three, anything we can take, eh, dena this coach manakachin. Let the one, zero this kunan, anukundi, one, zero ante, one, fractions roseunde, point two, four, eh, this kunaparala, anything we can take. Simply substitute here, what is X, X is two by, X minus Z, what is X minus Z? Minus one, plus Z, three by Y minus Z, what is Y minus Z? One, ante, two minus two plus three, that is how much? One, so option A is the right answer, ante, simple, any value, me kachin, value this kund, kana vaka matram good fit kundi. Question undefined kavodu, options undefined kavodu, unique answer avala, options are, aren't a problem, there any different, different kavunai. And they, question matram, undefined kavodu, undefined kavodu ante, X O J D Y, any equal values this kavodu. Equal values this kund, kenda zero usundi, denominator lo zero ochinand, undefined outundi, induku, different, different values ochetada, and values this kunnan ante. So any value you can take, eva this callan rule, eh, me ledi, anything, even if you want fractions, fractions kodavallandi, eh, dena this coach, okay now, right? Next one, in the given figure, P A Q is a tangent and B C is the diameter, yes. Diameter anagane, so indakka anukunna, diameter means angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees, ante. So this is the diameter means here, what is the angle form, this is how much? Ninety degrees, angle B A C equal to how much? Ninety degrees, so angle on semicircle, in the question lo, vaade ichesunada, E question lo, manamay find out chesa, how now? Angle on semicircle, angle on semicircle is always ninety degrees, aitha varikeng kavali? Then find A, B, C, A, B, C, ah, same indakka question, so alternate segment theorem. One tangent, one tangent, one card, tangent ki, card ki majlo form A A angle. Adhe tangent todi, alternate part, ante, ekada, adhe A B todi, ekada form A A angle ela undundi. Equal ga undundi, both are which angles, alter, equal angles and those angles we call it as alternate segment angles. How now, and they, emotundi, angle B A Q is equal to, angle B A Q and A D. Angle A C B equal ga undu, the A C B equal undu, that is sixty degrees, which angles? Alternate segment, by alternate segment theorem, both are equal, mari, the ninety, the sixty ante, what is this angle? Thirty degrees, therefore, angle A, B, C equal to how much? Thirty degrees, ante kada, ninety, sixty degrees means what is the remaining angle, thirty degrees, okay? So here we are using two theorems, angle on a semicircle is ninety degrees as well as alternate segmented. Alternate segment theorem, yepurukutravali, one tangent, one card, good fit kunda, one tangent, one card means always you have to remember, alternate segment theorem, okay? Question number twenty, if alpha plus beta equal to ninety degrees, then find A E expression. Expression ante, alpha, beta, and assume cheyandi, right, zero, assume cheyilemu, huh? Zero assume jese, problem chonde, so ekada zero assume jese, emotundi, pune, sine zero, zero, tan, tan, kodha zero. Okay, leda undefined aiputai, so tan, tan, cot, rendu karabodday ante, there is no possibility of zero ninety. Okay, sorry, tan, cot karaboduthi, zero ninety, this kalem, okay, we have to go with forty-five. Forty-five keldavanna problem is, sine forty-five, cos forty-five, vaka, alage, tan forty-five, cot forty-five kodha vaka, the multiple options usnai kada? And iti zero, gani, ninety, gani, forty-five, gani, this kodha outunda, ante, we have to go for thirty degrees or sixty degrees, ante. Vaka thirty, vaka sixty, and this, thirty plus sixty is how much? Ninety, anyway we can take, hmm, yepur jappandi, square root of, uh, what is sine thirty, sine thirty is one by two into. What is secant sixty, secant sixty is two, minus, what is cos thirty, cos thirty is root three by two. Into sine sixty is a root three by two, and they much in the, two, two cancel, that is one minus three by four means how much? So root of one by four means how much? One by two, so which option is one by two, that is the right answer, one by two avala, alpha thirty, beta sixty, substitute just a one by two avala. And they, sine thirty, what is sine thirty, exactly, first option, option A is the right answer, so sine thirty. Sin alpha, ante, sine thirty, sine thirty is like how much? One by two, so option A is the right answer, me thakoda check cheyandi, cos thirty kado, tan thirty ka, even kela lagakada, one by two la, so tan cot lo undada kavati. So option A is the right answer, so yepreena sare, whenever, a trigonometric equation, not only trigonometry, algebra. Algebraic equation gani, algebraic expression gani, trigonometric equation gani, trigonometric expression gani, karaboduthi. Always try to assume the trigonometry, the angles, algebraite values, assume cheyandi, and but follow three conditions again. So three conditions, same follow vari, question yepudu infinite kavodu, options yepudu infinite kavodu. Unique answer maatramai raval, okay, so these are the three points you have to keep in your mind, okay? Right, so this is about today's session questions, okay, in next class, we will go with some more questions, right?